Good morning, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order June 22. And if we can have everybody stand for the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so if you could take note, all commissioners are present this morning. And we can go over any agenda changes?
No.
Okay. So we can now go over the public comment period. If anybody has anything they would like to say that's not on the agenda today, now is the time. Everybody's good? Okay. We will review the approval of the minutes from the June 8 meeting. The only thing I noticed on the minutes is we were here until 7:40, not 6:40. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you Karen. Weren't we here until 7:40?
Yeah.
7:40.
9:40.
Don't like it.
We were here 10:40.
Graduation started at 7:30, I was late. Okay, is there any other changes?
Well, I have a question on the commissioners' reports. It says the chairperson suggested having Planning Commission meetings on off weeks in order to minimize the regular Planning Commission meeting schedules. I thought that the reason was a little more specific, that it was to, in order to act timely, in timely manner, on these cannabis registration appeals, because there were so many of them.
Well, I think we have a lot of things coming up that might require some extra attention. We just were taking a poll to tell Peter if he felt that in order to make the meetings move along and actually comply with the 15 days on the appeals that were out there. But also, we've got the EIRs coming up on the general plan as well as the cannabis, and I thought if he needed an extra week, was everybody willing to kick in just to lighten the load a little bit? Because trying to stay here till 10 o'clock tonight is not my ideal thing. I'm old.
I think we all agree with that.
Oh.
Perhaps it would be better to say minimize the length of the regular Planning Commission meetings, because I think that was the issue, that rather than stay till 10.
I think that would be more accurate.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that. Okay, is everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve of the minutes?
A second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's by vote. All right, next on the agenda, we're going to go to the public hearings, starting with PD for Connie Romano. And Gina, it looks like you're going to take that one over.
Yep. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So what we have before us is a plan development application for Connie Romano. She's proposing to construct a 480-square-foot garage in the historic district of McCollum Hill. Parcel is located in 8409 Peak Circle. McCollum Hill has an approved community plan, and part of the community plan, they have design guidelines. The design guidelines basically outline design features to maintain the historical character of the McCollum Hill community. So as I said before, this parcel is part of the historic district. So Ms. Romano actually developed a set of plans to build her garage, and she incorporated design features into the garage to mimic the other garage that's on the parcel, in addition to matching or complementing the historic residential structure on the parcel. So here's a copy of the site plan. I don't have my pointer, sorry. But if you'll notice, the large square down on the southern portion of the parcel is the house. Directly behind it, just slightly offset, is the existing garage. And just adjacent to that, closest to the west side, happens to be the proposed garage. They will take direct access off of Peak Circle. This is a better illustration of what is existing on the parcel. It's a fairly large parcel. It's one of the largest parcels there on Peak. As I said before, they've got a beautiful historic, single-family residence. In addition, they've got an existing garage, which the property owner plans to convert to an art studio for herself, and that was the reason for the need for a two-car garage. There's a snapshot of the location of where the proposed garage is going to be on the parcel. Garage elevations are pretty basic, nothing fancy, but it will, like I say, complement the historical structure and mimic the architectural features that are on the existing garage. Just some of the snapshots of the existing molding around the windows and on the other door openings. This is a copy, or a picture of the Sturgis Peak Stone House, which is the historical structure on the parcel. Prior to our application process, the applicant, or the property owner, met with an unofficial group organized through the Historic Society in McCollum Hill. And they have formed a small committee, like I said, an informal committee. They really don't have any real authority in this whole process, but we do look to them for, as an advisory committee. These individuals were actually the committee members that were appointed by the Board of Supervisors to actually develop the design guidelines. And so not only are they quite familiar with the design guidelines, but they have some very knowledgeable people with, you know, credentials that actually are very beneficial to the committee and the Historic Society, as well as to us, because, you know, as I said before, we kind of look to them as an advisory. And I think one of the things that we want to look at in the future is, as I've said in the past, is possibly kind of revisiting the whole PD permit process. So in the meantime, as said before, they're not really an official committee, but we do look at their advice, so to speak. So they have met with Connie, and they've approved her plans as submitted to us. Their comments are actually in the comment letter was submitted in your packet. If you read the packet, you'll see what their comments were relative to the application. They didn't have any issues with it. We circulated the application to everyone within 300 feet, didn't receive any comments relative to the proposal at all. So at this point, our recommendation is to approve the plan development permit, allowing Ms. Romano to construct her 480-square-foot garage.
Which sounds like a great idea to me, but I have one question.
Yes.
Your presentation today, and on page eight of the staff report, it says the garage is designed to resemble the existing garage's siding and trim, keeping the historic theme of the property. And I don't see anything in our package, and the elevation is a generic garage. I don't see anything. I guess the only question I have is, if we approve this, how are those design features built into our approval?
Based on the photograph that was submitted with the application, illustrates the materials and the design features that were incorporated into the existing garage, and they will basically, the proposed garage is going to mimic all of the materials used.
I did notice, is that reflected in the resolution? I mean, I'm not questioning anybody's...
It can be.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. It's just that it all is presented great, but I can't...
The proposed design is similar to the style, materials, and scale of other historic structures in the neighborhood.
Perhaps Condition 1.2 can add, because all constructions shall be in conformance with the approved site plan and elevation attachments A and B. Could say, "Site plan, elevations, and photographs submitted."
That would be good.
Okay.
Do the other commissioners have any comments? Is there a representative here today for this applicant?
Ray Waller, McCollum Hill. I'm the agent and a friend of Connie Romano. She cannot be here today, she is out of town. We reviewed the request, the supplemental, the staff report, and we'd like to personally thank Peter and Gina for expediting this process, so we can get this garage built. We support everything that's included in the staff report, in addition to the amendments. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody here that has any public comment on this project? No? Okay, we will bring it back, and do you have anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay. All right. Then can we get a motion, or have you read that Gina, and then we'll get the motion as amended?
Staff recommends Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2017-052, as amended, approving 2017-058 Plan Development, approving the design of a 480-square-foot garage in the historic district of McCollum Hill upon the findings included area.
Peter, could you repeat your suggested amendment?
The condition would read, "All constructions shall be in conformance with the approved site plan, elevations, and photographs," as provided in attachments A and B.
Yeah, maybe we should say, "And consistent with photographs."
Yeah, okay.
Since we don't have photographs of course.
"Site plan and elevations, as provided in attachment A and B, and consistent with the photographs submitted by the applicant."
That's great.
Do you want me to include that as Exhibit C? The photo? I can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Okay. Can we get a motion, as amended?
Aye, shall move.
You, second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? I'm sure Carrie's by vote. Thank you.
I'm sorry, who's seven?
Do you have the appeal by Sarah Hodson now?
This is new?
It's the rest of the series. We just wanted you to have a phone conversation and pick a copy up.
This is the same one?
I'm going to go out and try to contact her and see if she's had car trouble or... She does have trouble with her car, I know that.
It's really up to you if you want to carry this over to the, you know, later in the agenda.
As long as everybody's here following, because I don't want to go out of order and then the next person was expecting to be a little bit later. Sarah is not here yet, and she is asking for an opportunity to go out and call her, and is asking if this can be moved down a little bit, and here are the other ones first. Are you all okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Do I have to read this on the break anyway?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we're going to make just a slight change here and here, number two, a little bit later. We're going to go to number three, appeal by Daniel and Monica Horton. Is that applicant appellate here today? Okay. We're going to, we'll have a presentation from them first, and then we'll go to you. Thank you. Call whenever you're ready.
I believe I'm ready. This is appeal number 2016-533. This is Daniel and Monica Horton are appealing the sheriff's denial of a medical cannabis cultivation application. The site is 5.25 acres, and it's located at 4316 Gillum Road in Valley Springs. That's actually about four miles out of town. If you go northeast on Paloma Road, you'll be out there, there on the corner of Gillum Road and Paloma Road. That is in District Number One. On June 28, 2016, the applicants, Daniel and Monica Horton, filed a commercial cannabis cultivation registration for 24,000 square feet of outdoor cultivation area. They were given an application pending registration for that 2,400 square feet of outdoor area. In late April, early May, the appellate came into the office and was asking about his project. At that time, I opened the file, started looking at what he was asking about, did a little further review on the file, and discovered that there was a denial by the sheriff in the file. And looking at other things on the project, we didn't notice anything else significantly wrong with it. So the denial came out based on the sheriff's background check. And that falls under County Code Section 1795, 165 and 15A and I. And that reads, "The registration may be not denied or invalidated if..." And I is, "The sheriff finds the applicant for cultivation, for the cultivation site has been convicted of any misdemeanor, felony, or misdemeanor he deems to be reasonably related to the qualifications, functions, responsibilities, or duties expected of an applicant for the type of registration that he or she is applying for." The registrant was convicted of a misdemeanor offense. The determination as to whether that is reasonably related to the qualifications, functions, and responsibilities is solely the discretion of the sheriff's office. So we just come to present that. I'm going to have the sheriff's representative here shortly step up and explain their side to this, but due to concerns of confidentiality, it's necessary, I believe, to have the appellate waive the right to open that discussion. And for that, I'll turn this back to the sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lieutenant Tim Sturm for the sheriff's office. As previously stated, application was received to the sheriff's office, and in approximately March of this year, there was a background check performed on both of the applicants. There was information discovered during the course of the background check that the sheriff's department determined to be reasonably related to the qualifications, functions, responsibilities, or duties expected of the applicant for this type of registration. Additionally, the sheriff's office discovered information on the background check that the registrant had failed to reveal, excuse me, reveal during the application process.
Okay, Lieutenant Sturm, can I bring the appellate up and ask if he's willing to raise his rights to discuss this in full?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like to come up, please? Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, I just have a few questions that I need to ask you, so that we can keep moving along here. Are you appealing denial of a registration based on your criminal history?
Yes.
Okay. Do you disagree that you were convicted of a crime, and/or do you disagree that the conviction is reasonably related to the qualifications, functions, responsibilities, or duties expected of an applicant for the type of registration he or she is applying for?
I don't agree with that, no.
Okay. Has the sheriff provided you with a copy of the criminal history information based on the background check you had for the purpose of this application?
I don't think I've seen that.
Okay.
Yes, you did.
Okay, that's different than what the sheriff will have.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay. Lieutenant, do you have a copy of that with you today?
I do.
Okay, good. In order for us to consider your side of the story, we would need to review the documents from the sheriff describing your criminal history. We are not allowed to review these documents without your permission. Do you give the Planning Commission permission to review your criminal history information to discuss it during this hearing, and to place a copy of it into the record?
Yes.
Okay. And then I just need to make sure that you understand, as the appellate, you have the burden of proof during this hearing, which means that you have to provide us with evidence of why your registration should not be denied, otherwise, we may have to deny your appeal.
Yeah, I was 17 or 18 years old, so I'm 42 years old now, so it was quite a long time ago.
Okay. I'm going to let the lieutenant go ahead and present, and maybe he can show you a copy first, before he talks, and you can look at it, make sure we're on the same thing here.
Okay.
Would you like us to discuss with a little bit for you?
It's up to him.
I'm fine with it, I'm not...
Sir, this is your, the results of your background check. It's based on your fingerprints, and I did confirm that the information is, appears to be consistent with what you submitted as being...
Okay.
So I believe this is yours. In 1994, when you were 18 years old, it appears that you were arrested for a charge of battery, which was then, the disposition of it, which means how it turned out, indicates that you were convicted of a...
Well, I just don't want to...
...or 15, which is a fight or challenge to fight in public place.
Mm-hmm.
As a misdemeanor, with terms of probation. The probation in 2007 was completed, and the conviction at that point is what this says is set aside. The application will discuss otherwise, but the application says any and all charges.
Mm-hmm.
Secondly, there's possession of stolen property at the age of 19. You were arrested on a felony. It was convicted of, you were convicted of a misdemeanor in 1995, in March. And the application, which we reviewed, discusses the possession of stolen property when you were 18. There is no mention of the battery. I did read your associated, or subsequent, letter.
Okay.
That's the basis of our denial.
Okay.
So now, we can go ahead and let you do your presentation, and go ahead and defend whatever it is that you just learned, and then if the lieutenant has any discrepancies with what you say, he'll be allowed to come back up and dispute all that.
Okay, yeah, I was 18 years old, and it was a misdemeanor of stolen property. So I'm 42 years old now. I don't know if we could read the letter that I wrote.
We all got a copy and read it.
Okay, so I own my own business here in Valley Springs, I'm a cabinet maker, wife, three kids, we've lived here for 17 years. I haven't been in the lick of trouble since I was 18 years old. I'm 42 years old now, so I think this should not affect what I...
So the question that we kind of have before us today is that if you put it on your application with the sheriff's department, when you filled that out, did you do that?
I did do that.
Okay. So is there a different discrepancy than what you're telling us today from what you just learned from the lieutenant?
I did put that when I was 18 or 19 years old about the stolen property. So I did put that on, when I did the fingerprinting. So I'm not sure, the only thing I could think of is they were asking me about when I was, I believe I was 17 years old, the battery thing, and that was just, it was my cousin. It was, I was 17 years old, it was something totally different. But with the property, the stolen property, I did put that on my, when I did my fingerprinting and stuff like that, I put that on there.
Okay. Is there, you will have another chance for rebuttal, but is there anything else that you want to add at this time, or do the commissioners have any questions?
Do we get to look at this criminal record or anything?
He's waived his rights. If you'd like a copy, the lieutenant can show it to you.
Sure. And Lieutenant, if I could ask you, are you the person who actually made the decision in this case?
No, sir.
Was it the sheriff or someone else?
Yes, sir, the sheriff and I did brief, and I'll be finding our case.
You just have the one copy, you don't have any others?
Unfortunately, we do not have a copy. This is the document relative to the criminal history, sir.
I would just, I would think that for this hearing, it would be important to have a copy of the document in the record, and so maybe we can take a recess and make copies.
Please.
Okay. So we'll just take, Annette, how much time do we need for that?
Take a run over and take copies.
Okay, we're going to take a quick recess, maybe between five and 10 minutes, and then we'll re-adjourn here.
Thank you.
Okay. If you all had a chance...
If you all had a chance to review, and we can continue?
I'm still looking.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready. Okay? Okay, we'll reconvene the hearing now, if you'd like to come up, Mr. Horton. Okay, now, do the commissioners have missed questions for him?
I, I might have some questions, but I think only after I hear from the sheriff. I, I don't mean to run the meeting.
No, you're fine. Does anybody else have any questions, or you wanna hear from the lieutenant?
I, I agree with Tim, I'd like to hear from him.
Okay. They'd like to hear from you, please.
First, will I give you a chance, do you have anything more to say before we start asking you questions?
Uh, actually, I'll go ahead and take your questions first. I did, as a matter of housekeeping, if we could ensure that any copies of this that are revealed by the public have the personal information, including a social security number redacted.
Actually, before you leave here, I think you can collect these and take them with you, and then we're not responsible for them leaving the room.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I, I would, in the, it would be nice to have one redacted copy for the record, and I guess I would just ask the sheriff in the future to come prepared with some redacted copies after the waiver is issued, so that at least they can be put into the record.
Yes, sir.
Part of the evidence, thank you.
So, my first question is, what, which entries on, or is there only one entry on this that the sheriff's relying upon?
There's actually two.
Okay.
On page one, the criminal history starts at the bottom of the page with the, um, it, it indicates a book slash release on a two forty-two PC battery. That is actually the same case which is later resolved as a conviction for a fighting in public as a misdemeanor. And that, the conviction is on page two of your copies.
But are you relying upon that as part of your decision?
Um, that information was not, yes, to answer your question, yes. That information was not reported on the application form under a specific question, uh, two questions in fact, of list any and all arrest or formal charges with or without dispositions for any criminal offense within the US or any other country. The second relevant question was, are you now, or have you ever been, on probation slash parole slash supervision from any state for a conviction of any offense, including traffic?
But it seems to me we have got two different things going here, and that one is, the only basis for the denial that we have before us is on a reasonably related basis, not the failure to report or, or file.
Failure to report was a checkmark in the packet.
Excuse me?
Oh, failure to pass, you're right.
So, I think what we need from you is what, what, which of these violations do you consider to be reasonably related to their qualifications, functions, responsibilities, et cetera, of the applicant proceeding with the application?
The sheriff's department believes that the conviction for possession of stolen property, as well as a conviction for battery, are relevant to the qualifications for which the applicant is applying.
And could you, could you go through what the considerations of your office are? For, I realize you have the discretion to make that determination. We could look to see whether that discretion's been abused. And so I appreciate knowing what your office considers to be the scope of your, your own review of whether something is reasonably related.
In this position, the potential for the exchanging control of currency, property, and itemization of those are relevant, and we believe that a prior conviction for possessing stolen items is, is relevant to dealing in this type of a business, which could tend to have a, a large amount of cash as a result of it.
And in making your determination, do you consider anything other than the offense itself and whether it, you know, do you consider, like, the timing of the offense, the, the time lapse between when they happened and now, or do you just look at the defense, at the offense, and say that is an offense that, whether it's committed yesterday or twenty years ago, that's reasonably related? Is that, is that what you, what your process is?
I couldn't speak in, uh, in, in each, each, each application is reviewed independently.
Yeah, well, speak, speak as to this.
Sure. So, in this case, a, an additional consideration was the failure to disclose other charges.
But that, but that isn't before us at this point.
Okay. In this case, we do believe the possession of stolen property is relevant to the qualifications.
And, and the battery?
If that's before us, yes, we, we believe that.
Well, it's, it's, it's really your
Yes.
We, we didn't have any of this information before this morning. So, it's up to you as to what you think is relevant as being reasonably related. And maybe I didn't make my question clear. When your office is looking at this, do you just look at what the offense was and making your determination, exercising the sheriff's discretion, as to whether it's reasonably related? Or do you consider other factors such as what has the time lapse that has happened since the, uh, since the offense, uh, the, what, what the, uh, subject has done since the offense, uh, this sort of thing? Do those considerations enter into your consideration, or is it, is it just, hey, this is receipt of stolen property, and this person's gonna be handling money and transferring property, and that's reasonably related?
It's, it's both, there is consideration to, to both what you just mentioned. Uh, I, I'm not sure why your back, your packet doesn't discuss the failure to disclose, mine does. And, and the reason I, again, bring that up is, that is part of our consideration. If there is a conviction which is not disclosed on the application, it is a consideration for us.
Lieutenant Sturm, was the first conviction that was not disclosed, there's two convictions, correct?
That is correct.
And only one was disclosed on the application?
Yes.
Was the one that was disclosed when he was a minor?
My records and my math indicate that he was six months shy of being nineteen years old.
Okay.
So, no, an adult.
Okay, and so, the second conviction is the one that was not put on?
No, the second conviction, I believe, is noted as a possession of stolen property on, on the application.
On the application, okay. So, Paul, did you get a copy of the letter from the sheriff's department? Because I don't have that in my packet, and does it say failure to disclose, or does it only state a conviction related?
At the bottom, it does say furthermore, the applicant failed to disclose other arrest, formal charges.
Paul, I can't quite hear you.
Excuse me. Down at the bottom of the page, it does say furthermore, the applicant failed to disclose other arrest, formal charges, convictions required during the background process.
And that's not included in the resolution?
So, the action that the county, the planning department took to deny it was based on the, um, the conviction. We have struggled somewhat with the failure to disclose aspect of, of this, and we're still sort of working through that, that issue. In many cases, failure to disclose has been, or in several cases, has been reversed because they later found that they weren't required to disclose it, that, that the courts had ruled that, you know, and so, even though it may come up in the background check, the applicant felt they weren't required to disclose it, and in some cases, the law actually states that they weren't required to disclose it. So, we're still, we felt that the, rather than bring that issue up, we would just focus our action on the one finding that they were convicted of. So, if the, if the commission were to approve the appeal, we would actually still have that issue before us and would need to consider that in the future with the rest, with the continuing review of the application. It's probably unfortunate that we just didn't include it, you know, with this, so it'll have to be discussed at one time. But, um, again, there, there's some questions about that component.
Well, we've had several of them go to court, and they've had those blocked.
We've had one, I believe, so far, that has, has gone through the process.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
So, I apologize, I should, it looks like I should have put the, the battery thing. I, I believe, I thought I was seventeen years old, and I didn't think that I had to put it on because I was seventeen years old. So, um, I, I should have put that on there, but I thought I was seventeen. So, I thought you had to be eighteen for it to be on your record and all of that. And I, I honestly thought, and like, after five years or ten years, things go off your record, but I guess they never go off your record, so. I didn't put that on there because I, I thought I was seventeen years old when that happened, so. As a young man, I made that mistake, you know, but I haven't been in a lick of trouble since I was eighteen years old. So, that's just, that's all I wanted to say.
If I could ask the lieutenant a question or two. You told us you thought the first offense was actually after the age of eighteen. Is that the offense date or the conviction date you're talking about?
That's the offense date, sir.
You actually have that in your record? I don't see it on the stuff you've given us, or maybe I'm just not reading it right.
The entry that's under the ARR slash DET slash site is generally indicative of the offense date.
So nineteen ninety-four oh six oh four is June fourth, nineteen ninety-four?
That's correct.
I was, I was a senior in high school when that, when that happened, so.
And you were born in seventy-five?
Correct, yeah.
So you were in fact eighteen at the time.
I was eighteen.
Were you charged as a juvenile, or?
You know, it was so long ago, I really, I can't
Your letter said you didn't go to court.
I thought I was seventeen, but I could have been eighteen.
Back to the lieutenant for a second. Do you folks have the, any kind of consideration in your, in these cases to the delay in time from when an event, a conviction happened to today's date? Does it matter if it's ten years, twenty years, fifty years?
I don't believe that there's a threshold identified. We do check to see what has happened, excuse me, between that date and the date of the application.
Has there been any incident involving this young man, this young man?
Hello?
From our point of view.
Since, since the, what is it, nineteen ninety-four day or ninety-five? Do you have any records of him getting in trouble?
I don't believe there's been any law enforcement contacts.
Do you know if the sheriff, I guess the sheriff is the one who actually investigated this, he himself, right? Except for today.
Yes.
You, you said you didn't get involved in it before.
That, that's correct.
Do you today have the authority to reconsider this decision?
Yes.
So you had a quizzical look on your face.
I was examining your question first.
Is, is there any situation that would cause you to reconsider a case like this where there has been a long delay?
May I discuss the, the failure to disclose?
I, I think you could, in my personal opinion, as you could, as it would affect the conviction aspect. Because we're, technically, we're only looking at the convictions right now.
That was on a separate conviction? Than, than the stolen property one? Again, it is the sheriff's department's position that this type of enterprise does deal in either cash or items of monetary value, and a conviction for stolen property is, is not compatible with a, this, this type of, an operation, if you will.
But that seems to me to reflect an opinion that, once you have been convicted of receiving stolen property, that is a reasonable relationship, and no matter whether the person has gone on to be a model citizen and created his own company and everything else, that's still a reasonable relationship, just per se. I don't, I don't see where we could have any other history than what we have here that would be more, relevant in, in determining, if, if that's a consideration, if the consideration of the history that's happened since the conviction is a part of the decision, what considerations, what facts do you envision would change the result here that are different from the facts that we have before us? I'm, I'm sorry if I'm unclear, do I, do you understand what I'm asking?
I believe I do.
Okay.
I, I believe that, and, and I understand the discussion about the requirement to disclose, but I believe that there was two direct questions that were asked without qualification, whether something had or had not occurred, one being probation, the second being conviction. And the conviction in itself is relevant, as is the disclosure of it, for the conformity to later documentation and paperwork that's required in this industry.
So, you're saying, oh, that, that's a part of the personal history, is the failure to disclose, whether we're denying it on the basis of failure to disclose or not, that is a part of the history that you're looking at in addition to whatever else might have happened in the twenty years?
Yes, sir.
I understand.
Okay, on the conviction, the one that we're referencing, was there a reason you didn't, oh, you didn't disclose that one because you thought you were underage?
I, correct, I thought I was seventeen years old when that happened.
Okay.
I, I know that I was a, I was a senior in high school, I know that.
Okay, and the one that you did disclose, you feel that it was so long ago that we should overlook it, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I was eighteen year, I was eighteen years old. And as a young man, you make a mistake, and you learn from your mistakes. I, I, yeah, so I was, I was eighteen years old. I don't think that that should affect twenty-two years later, twenty-three years later, that I can't do this, this business, you know, because of what I, of a mistake when I was eighteen years old.
Mr., excuse me.
No, go ahead.
Would you describe briefly what you have accomplished since you were convicted of this crime and the time you made the application?
Yes, so, my wife and I, we've been together since high school. We've been married for, we've been together for twenty-five years? Twenty-five years. Three kids, I own a cabinet shop. At one, I, I downsized recently, but I, we were in Lodi before, I had eleven employees working for me. I haven't been in a lick of trouble since. Been married with kids right out of high school, have been in a lick of trouble since.
Any, any regulatory citations from the Board of Equalization or business license problems and this sort of thing?
No, I don't think so, I, we stay on top of everything and try to do everything legit as, as it could be. So I, we try to stay on top of everything and do it right.
I have a question of the applicant, but no, I'm sorry, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
I believe, I think I have the right case, there was a letter that came in from a neighbor of yours.
I didn't know this.
Cosgrove Creek Road is near you, correct?
I'll agree with that. Yeah, that's right.
Address of thirty-five fifty-five Cosgrove Creek Road. Um, address of thirty-five fifty-five Cosgrove Creek Road. And they complained about the cannabis.
I didn't know that I heard a complaint.
Do you know these folks today?
I don't, so I'm up to, I know I'm at, I'm at compliance, I have to be seventy-five, I have to be seventy-five feet from a fence line. So it kind, I'm, when I'm seventy-five feet away, I'm pretty much, if you're on, that's the only road that you can see the garden from, is that road, is Cosgrove, because it kind of goes up the hill and it oversees. I have a six-foot fence, locking gate, I'm up to code.
There, there's a.
To everything, so.
There's a pond right below your property on the other side of Gillum.
Correct, yeah.
And there's a little pallet full of what appears to be planting mix or dirt of some sort.
Yeah, correct.
Is there another farm, other cannabis farm?
I don't believe so.
What, what would that pallet be there for?
You know, I think it's the, the reddish bark stuff that you, for, for good looks, I think that's what they're gonna put.
Your neighbor doesn't have a cannabis farm?
No, sir, no. So with being the seventy-five feet away, I, it kind of puts it in the middle of my property, of my five acre.
When you're up on a hill.
A little bit of a hill, yes, correct.
In fact, if you're on Gillum Road, you look up, and it's a terrible turnaround in your driveway.
It is. You, it sounds like you've been there. I'm, I'm all up to code with the six-foot fence and the locking gate and all of that, but you can't see it from, from that road.
You can see the green fence, you can see a little bit of the green fence.
Correct, correct.
Okay, does anybody have any further questions?
I do have the planning director. This, this urgency ordinance. Urgency ordinance says a registration may be denied or invalidated if the sheriff finds the applicant for the cultivation site has been convicted, et cetera. It doesn't say it shall be, it says it may be. Do I understand correctly that it's the planning director that actually makes the final decision on a denial or invalidation?
Yes, it is.
Would you understand by the use of the word "may" that the planning director has discretion, even if the sheriff makes the finding that he has, to determine not to deny the application?
Yes, I would say that the ordinance does give me that discretion.
I would say so too. And was that, was that discretion exercised in this case, and if so, was the length of time between the time of the conviction and, and the present taken into account, plus the apparent clean history of the applicant since that time?
I chose not to substitute my judgment for that of the sheriff when it comes to the applicability or relationship between the prior conviction and his determination, the relationship to cultivation. So I did not consider any of those factors.
Let's assume that, that the sheriff acted within his discretion in making the finding about the relationship between the conviction and the qualifications, functions, responsibilities or duties expected of an apt, let's just assume that that's solid.
Okay.
Now, let's assume forty years had passed instead of twenty or whatever, would, would you not think that the person that should take into account the time lapse would be the planning director?
I haven't thought of that before. There is some validity to that, taking that position adds a whole nother layer to the responsibilities.
But, but I think from what we've already, you've already said, that, that is part of the responsibility. Would you agree?
I don't know that that was the intent of the ordinance, but I think the way it's written and the way you've articulated it, I would have to agree with you.
Okay, some other questions, there are two applicants here, Monica and, and Daniel. Do we know whether Monica is on the other documents that are required, such as a seller's permit, the business license, the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, NOI?
I think Paul will look at the file to double check that.
They are on the notice of applicability for the water quality board. Business license, they have it as a, under their cabinet shop, but they also list it as a cannabis cultivation, but it's under DH Cabinets. And it looks like the seller's permit is under Daniel. That's what I see here. I don't have an actual, I have a, a proof applying for the seller's permit on June ninth, and it's listed as Daniel Horton.
Paul, you need to speak up and more directly into the microphone.
Did you hear any of that?
A little bit. If you could summarize for us, who's on what?
Um, the business license lists DH Cabinets and countertops. I assume that's their cabinet business, but the type of business is listed as cannabis cultivation. Again, seller's permit is actually under DM Farming and DH Cabinets and countertops and on Gillum Road in Valley Springs. And the NOI, the Water Quality Board documentation is in both Daniel and Monica's work.
And the business license has it listed as a partnership, so that sounds like it is Mr. Horton and Mrs. Horton.
Correct, that's correct.
The, the cabinet business is a partnership?
Yeah.
Okay, now, if the application had been made solely in the name of Monica Horton, then this conviction wouldn't be relevant, would it? So if you assume that the conviction is a, is a sufficient basis upon which to deny the application as to Daniel, what do we do when it's not sufficient as to Monica? Do we deny the entire application or deny it just to Daniel?
It looks like the proposal today, Commissioner Wooster, is to deny the entire application.
I'm not sure that I agree with that. I mean, given that they could have applied, or she could have just applied in her own name, and the rest of the documents are in order.
But that's not the discussion today. I'm, I'm just, we're getting way off track here. The discussion is, he has charges that, are they relevant or not to this industry? And do those charges prevent him from having this license? He's on the application. The sheriff's department felt that the two were associated. The planning department brought it forward to us as such. Obviously, the sheriff's department had another issue on the application that we weren't presented with today, but could be down the road. So even if we approved this today, it could come back with another issue later. We've heard a lot of hearings over the last year that involved very similar cases, and actually, some of the charges were older than this. I'm just reminding you that we're here to make one decision today, and that is, do you feel that these charges justify allowing him to have a commercial marijuana license? And have we ruled similar in, in the past? So we need to be, we need to be focusing just on that issue today, and that's our vote today. I mean, you can have an application with a lot, we've had a, we could take many, many, many different scenarios where people are wanting to say, we want to do background checks on the workers, because there's nightmares that exist there. I, I, I'm just looking at what the sheriff presented to the planning department and the planning director brought through it for us today. I think the question comes down to, since it says "may" and not "shall," do, do you feel that he should be able to move forward with cultivating? That's where we're at.
Well, I think the question also is before us, the, the license is before us today. The license is in both names, and I think Commissioner Wooster has raised a very relevant question of what's before us.
You're not allowed to alter the license, though. Even a year from now, they can't alter the license. It is that license, it's those two people, and they go together. We can't alter it and say, remove his name and let her have it, though. Does the planning commission or the department allow that?
Yeah, Ethan, if you.
The, the code prohibits assignment, and in this particular case, it would be an assignment if one was to be removed from a partnership to an individual. And if, for example, it had been a corporation and one of the board of directors were, had background check problems, it would not be an assignment for that member to leave, but in this case, it's a partnership, so it would be an assignment from, I suppose, a partnership to an individual, that's how I would look at it.
Do we have any further questions of the appellant? Because I'd like to give him fair opportunity to have his case heard. We're good? Okay. Do you have anything further you want to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, Paul?
No, I'm.
Okay, can we go to public comment then, please? Does anybody in the public have anything they would like to say on this particular appeal? Okay, seeing none, I am going to go ahead and bring the hearing back and to the commissioners for discussion and... Do you want to start, or do you want to start over here?
I'll start.
Okay.
It's, it seems to me that the sheriff did act within his discretion in making the finding that he did about the relationship between the offense and the duties, qualifications, et cetera. I don't think that's the end of it, though. I think that there is a further discretion reposed in the planning director, which I'm not convinced in this particular case was actually exercised. And I think it should be. There is also the issue of what about the fact that Monica's on this as well? And I understand Mr. Turner's point, I'm not sure that, that granting the appeal as to her would violate the anti-assignment clause, but I'm willing to hear what my, I want to hear what my fellow commissioners have to say on that subject. But my own opinion is that this should go back to the planning director, one way or the other, for the exercise of discretion, and if he determines that the lapse of time between the conviction and, and the application and the history of the applicant since the conviction would warrant a, a registration, even though the sheriff's finding is, is proper, then that would be the decision. And if he finds otherwise, then there would be a denial.
I think that today, we need to look at what's in front of us today, and that's not, in my opinion, what we're doing again. So I think we need to bring it back and discuss what's in front of us today, and today, it's the background check. It has nothing to do, I kind of agree with Kelly and I kind of don't. Daniel's listed on the application, we can't just take him off, that's not how the application was submitted. The application was submitted with Daniel and Monica. So we're not even, we need to look at what's in front of us today. Today is that the sheriff said that he failed to pass the background check, in his opinion.
I sort of agree with Karen, the, it would seem that if we, if we somehow allow Monica to have the farm, then perhaps the sheriff should have checked the fact that husband has this evil record. Just because it's one part of a husband-wife combination, I don't think that allows us to avoid any investigation of the criminal record. I don't think this criminal record has anything to do with a cannabis farm twenty-three or twenty-four years later. I'm sorry, this, this gentleman has shown to me that he's a model citizen in this county. He's not just a family man, but he has all sorts of employment history that, it just shows he's the kind of person that we should have here. And no offense to the sheriff, but I suspect he had an awful lot of cases to review, and I doubt that he had any time at all to look at the history of this particular person. And I would hope that he would have looked at it. It does put a subjective element into the urgency ordinance that isn't there, except under the word reasonable, reasonable relationship. And I think included in that concept is the notion of this time relationship. And so I'm going to support the appeal. And I'm, and I'm not going to get into the husband-and-wife distinction, I just think it should be, the appeal should be granted.
I agree that the appeal should be granted, and basically on the grounds that Commissioner Wooster first applied. If the planning director wishes to exercise discretion, and I'd be willing to take this case back, and then we can review that exercise of discretion. But I feel that the sheriff, I really respect the sheriff's determination as to this type of offense is reasonably related. I, I, I think that the sheriff has the expertise there, and I think it would take a remarkable, it would be a remarkable situation for me to say the sheriff has abused his discretion in that determination. I don't think that we are bound to the same standards in, and I don't think the sheriff has really fully considered the other considerations, such as were mentioned by Commissioner Bocelli. So I think it's within our, within our powers to, to grant this appeal on the basis of what has happened since the violations.
I, I'm, I'm not even struggling with this, I'm sorry. I mean, I'm not a cruel heart, but the sheriff has made a recommendation based on this conviction, not on just this appeal, but on many, many appeals that we've sat here and heard, and it was sent to us as a denial by the planning department. This isn't the first one. I guess I'm coming harder, I don't know, but I, I don't know, because I, I'm sitting here and I hear story after story after story after story, but the guidelines were in place, people knew what they were applying to do, they knew what the qualifications were when they stepped. They knew what the qualifications were when they stepped in and applied for this. And I'm not going to rule today or tomorrow based on my sympathy for people, because I have sympathy for these people. I have to rule on what is put before me. I've ruled on it before. I've ruled on convictions that were 30 years old, and for 20 years, they had great behavior. So, I'm going to stand on upholding the planning department. I honestly feel even if we didn't stand on upholding the planning department, this is going to come back with a failure to disclose. You're going to be right back here again. And so, maybe you have a reason for no failure to disclose, that you would grant that as well. I don't know. I don't see it.
It's not before us today.
No, it's not.
I tend to agree with much of what you just said. The problem I'm having is, I'm not convinced on the basis of what we heard today that the planning department did everything it should have done in considering this application. I don't think, from what we heard today, that discretion was actually exercised by the planning department. Now, I do think that they have the complete discretion to deny this application based upon what's in the record. What I'm not convinced of is that that decision, considering all the relevant factors, was actually ever made. That's my problem.
I would certainly have no objection if the planning department wishes to continue the case, or withdraw it for now, or whatever, and bring it back to us with a fuller determination. But if we're stuck with making a decision today, if the planning department doesn't want to do that, I think we have to make a decision today based on what we've heard today and what's in the record.
I don't think you're stuck. I think if you want to send it back for further review, you've got that option.
I just agree. I think that just in a court situation, if a judge finds that a county or a department did not exercise their discretion, they do have the authority to demand that they go back and exercise it. I don't think it would be up to planning based, if that was the determination that you made.
Chair, could I talk to Peter outside for just a second?
I think that's a great idea. We need a 10-minute break. Okay. So, we were having commission with, discussion with the commissioners. We took a little break so we could have some conversation here. Ethan, did you have anything you wanted to add at this point?
Not really. I mean, if however the commission wishes to direct, as Wooster implied, the planning director to revisit the issue and exercise a discretion that Commissioner Wooster suggested the code affords him, then we would hope that it would come with instructions to that effect.
Okay. So, we're faced with a decision now of, do you want to send it back to the planning department and let them reconsider and look at all aspects of this and bring it back?
That would be my view.
Okay.
I think we should rule on what's in front of us.
I agree with Kelly.
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Wooster also.
Okay. Then, do you want to make a motion to that effect, and we will take a vote? And be very clear about what you want.
And that's the problem.
Now, would we have to continue this to a certain date?
I would recommend it be continued off calendar.
Off calendar.
To a certain date.
You would need a waiver from the appellants on that?
Probably would be good. Mr. Horton, the commission is considering referring this back to me with no specific date. And typically, an appeal is to be heard within 45 days. Would you consider waiving the timeframe for that to occur?
I believe the answer is yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Do you need us to further explain what's going on right now?
If you wouldn't mind.
Okay. So, what they're doing is, they want the planning director to relook at the sheriff's recommendation and then bring it back for a separate hearing. We would not be ruling on your case today. So, your appeal would still be open, but the planning director is going to be given direction from the planning commission to further look at your case and bring it back. So, there would be another hearing set up for you to come back at a later date. And we would be having it off calendar. Wouldn't be a specific date at this point. We wouldn't know when that would be.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. I would make a motion, I do make a motion, that this matter be taken off calendar with direction from the commission to the planning director to exercise discretion under the It starts off, "The registration may be denied or invalidated if the sheriff finds," et cetera. "To exercise his discretion to determine whether to deny the registration on the basis of the sheriff's finding, and to consider whatever other relevant factors there are with respect to this application, and make a new decision."
I second that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Three, two. Motion carries. Okay. So, it's going to be taken off calendar. The planning department will reach out to you when it's going to be back before us again. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have to leave.
Yes. So, Commissioner Bocelli is going to be dismissed for the rest of the day. And Commissioner Bocelli, can we please get your sheriff's report to hand over to Lieutenant Sturm? And then, Billy, you'll keep your copy and redact the information.
Yes.
Okay. I'm still here. Excuse me. Can I see your agenda for a second? Because I'm lost.
I think we're going back to item E2.
I think we're not. I think we're going to go ahead and let the other one go first, and then we'll catch that one last.
Okay.
That's, so we're going to go to item number four, the appeal of Stuart Albert's, planning director's denial. And Paul, are you going to be doing this one as well? Is the appellant or a representative for the appellant here today?
Not that I saw. They did submit a letter for a continuance. I emailed it to the planning commission.
Okay. And Lieutenant Sturm left. I don't know. I spoke with the sheriff about this case this morning. They did further research, and he indicated that the charges were when he was not 18 years old, it was previous to 18 years old, and that they were not going to any further contest this. So, not sure how you guys want to handle that.
For Albert's?
Is it Albert's?
I think you're confusing it with Banks, which is...
Maybe. I'm on. I am talking about Banks. I apologize. And that's not on here?
No.
Got it. Where'd my agenda go? Sorry. You can go ahead.
Well, would you guys have to make a determination whether to grant that continuance that...
Okay.
So, we received a last-minute request for continuance on this. It is our opinion that there is no further reason to continue. This has been scheduled for some time. And we would just soon recommend that we go ahead with this hearing.
When were they first notified of the hearing date?
It was a notice June 9th.
June 9th. And when did you receive the request for the continuance?
June 19th.
Do you, what would be your reasonable assumption as to when they received the notice of the hearing?
June 12th, maybe? 13th, perhaps?
And the basis for the continuance is just that they, neither the applicant nor the representative can be here today?
Yes. They requested 30 days, to be continued 30 days out.
I don't think I know. Did you get it? Did you get it?
It was, you sent this to us by email, right?
Correct.
The request for continuance.
So, the appeal was filed on May 30th. They know that they have 45 days in which the appeal will be heard. We don't send out the actual notice of the appeal until we, you know, provide the public notice that goes out 10 days prior to the hearing. You know, they've had, they say, "We need more time to prepare," but they've had since May, you know, May 30th to prepare. So, I mean, you know, if, I suppose it doesn't really matter to us whether it's continued or not. At some point in time, we get to the point where the continuance, as we experienced last year, was an opportunity to just push out the hearing date to the end of the harvest season. I think we're still pretty early in that right now, so it's probably not an issue. But as we get further down the line, that's going to become an issue. And I would not be recommending too many appeal, you know. But perhaps we could do a better job of notifying early on the appellants of when the expected hearing date's going to be. But typically, it's the last, you know, the last hearing before the 45 days occurs.
Okay, so...
This was denied by letter of May 15th. And so, they've had from then till now to prepare.
And they sent a letter of May 26th. Saying that they just received a letter of denial. So, I am...
So, the question before you right now is whether or not to grant their request for continuance.
Is there nobody here from the applicant?
That's the reason for their request. Nobody could be here. It just seems to me that we, just by having it on the calendar, now, we've taken 10 minutes of this to consider whether it should be a continuance or not. And it would be pushing it to a calendar that's probably going to be more crowded than what we have today. And I think they've had a fair chance to prepare and get another representative if they had to have somebody here today. So, I'm willing to deny...
Okay. So, let me just poll you guys. Do you want to do a continuance or have the hearing today?
Hearing today.
I want to hear from the public and then...
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that has any comment on this one?
Regarding the continuance.
No? Okay. Bring it back to the commission.
Let's hear it today.
That's two. I'll say three.
I think we should go ahead today.
Okay. All right. Now, you may continue.
All right. So, this is an appeal of 2016-629 from Stuart Albert. So, it's a denial by the planning director.
Can I interrupt you first?
Sure.
Okay. Or do you have any concerns about the address issue? I noticed you highlighted and said, "This is the address they wrote."
The best address they provided. I don't know what, why that was in that letter for, to continue, maybe.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Be good. All right. Just a quick summary. The location is at 8429 Oak Ridge Road, Mount Ranch. It is a 20.59 acre parcel. The reasons for denial was the registrant provided inadequate evidence of cultivation pursuant to 17.95.165.N and .3.A-B. And he also provided false in this leading information pursuant to 17.95.170.A-4. This is the documents that were submitted with his registration on June 29th. As you can see on the plot plan, the left side of this paper is north. The parcel is the one that's on top. It has a California-like shape to it. You can see where the registrant wrote down where his cultivation site was. He applied for a, for this grow that's here at the bottom. This is the picture he provided. This is the only photographic evidence he provided. It's, as you can see, you can see four rows of cannabis, and they're fairly long. I believe there's 17 plants. And on the left, you can see a fifth row. It's smaller than the rest. In the foreground, you can see a solar panel. And this is the parcel on, from aerial imagery from June 9th, 2016. As you can see, there's no cultivation site going on on June 9th, 2016. However, the picture that was submitted was from September of 2015, September 10th. This is an aerial from September 17th, 2015. And as you can see as well, there is no cultivation taking place on the parcel. However, if you look at the bottom right, it seems that that cultivation, which is on a neighboring parcel, is the one that's depicted on the photograph. And here's a closer look. It has, it's composed of the same elements. It has four long rows, a short fifth one at the very front. You could see the little black dock. That's the solar panel. And here's a comparison of the two. You could see the fencing. You could see the rows. You could see the small row.
If I could interrupt you for, while we have these on the screen. The address of the parcel next door, do you happen to know what that address is? I mean, this, this address issue, I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're actually looking at the applicant's parcel and making the decision on the correct parcel today.
Yes, it's the correct parcel. It's based on the APN, not the address. And that's the APN that they provided for this parcel right here.
Okay.
And let me just jump ahead real quick. And here's a map of the area. The parcel to the right is also a registered parcel. It's registered to the appellant. So is the one on the far right, where you see the six, seven hoop houses. They all belong to the same registrant. The subject parcel, however, is the California-shaped one, I would call it. And like I said, there's no evidence of cultivation ever being there as far as I've looked back in time through aerials up to 2010. No evidence of cultivation. So, therefore, the photograph that was submitted was, failed to meet the criteria of 17.95.165.N and .3.A-B. And therefore, it was found to be a false representation of what was going on in the subject parcel as depicted. And it was denied also under 17.95.17A.4. And is there any questions? That's it for my presentation.
Did you say it's the same applicant?
I mean, this address issue, I just want to make sure that we're not... That we're actually looking at the applicant's parcel and making the decision on the correct parcel today.
Yes, it's the correct parcel. It's based on the APN, not the address. And that's the APN that they provided for this parcel right here.
Okay.
And let me just jump ahead real quick. And here's a map of the area. The parcel to the right is also a registered parcel. It's registered to the appellant. So is the one on the far right where you see the six, seven hoop houses. They all belong to the same registrant. The parcel, the subject parcel, however, is the California-shaped one, I would call it. And like I said, there's no evidence of cultivation ever being there as far as I've looked back in time through aerials up to 2010. No evidence of cultivation. So therefore, the photograph that was submitted was failed to meet the criteria of 17.95.165.9.3. A-B. And therefore, it was found to be a false representation of what was going on in the subject parcel as depicted. And it was denied also under 17.95.17. A. Point four. And is there any questions? That's it for my presentation.
Did you say the same applicant is... Has a permit or has applied for a permit on the next-door parcel?
Yes.
Okay.
And that parcel is the one that chose to grow on aerials?
Yes.
And how sure are we of these property lines shown on these aerials?
That's the reason I provided this map. I'm pretty confident in them. If you look at the road on the... You see how the road follows the boundary lines pretty accurately? So I would say they're fairly accurate. Plus or minus maybe five, six feet.
So, I'm sorry, Miguel, he lives right next door to the vacant land, correct?
Well, actually, I don't know if he lives there or not, but the registrant did register this parcel, this parcel, and this parcel.
And where... I... Okay. Can you go back to the photo that had nothing on it and show us that? That one? What date is that?
That's 9/17/2015.
Okay. Do you think there's any possibility that that little grow right there where the dent is, he thinks is on that property?
I don't believe so. This is the picture he provided, 9/10/2015. This is aerial imagery from 9/17/2015. And there... It's the same grow.
Doesn't... Well, that's my concern. They look the same. And when you pulled a blank map back... That?
This one?
Right in the... Where it endeth?
Right there.
It looks like the exact same grow if it's over the property line and he didn't realize it. Am I seeing that wrong?
I believe it's this grow right here.
Yeah.
That's the one that's depicted.
And that wasn't there in 2015?
This is there 2015, but it's not on the subject parcel that I registered.
It's on the next-door parcel that is registered with him. I don't know what the status of that registration is.
Correct.
But...
Okay.
So essentially, 17.95.165.9.3 requires photographic evidence of cultivation taking place on the parcel that is being registered. The photograph he submitted as evidence is not taken on the subject parcel. It's taken on the neighboring parcel. This cultivation right here that is highlighted is this, as you can see.
Did you happen to notice what he... What photograph he submitted for the parcel that this is actually on? Is it duplicate photograph?
It's not a duplicate photograph. He submitted photos for the cultivation that's taken on the northern part of the parcel up here.
And then he has the third one?
Correct, he has the third one over here. All throughout 2016, there was no cultivation taking place on the subject parcel. Somewhere between June 9th and August 20th, this area was developed. And I'm assuming, for lack of aerials right now, that cultivation's taking place on this developed area. This is an image from August 20th, 2000... That should be 2016, typo. This is from August of 2016. And this one right here is June 9th, 2016. So if you notice, that graded area doesn't exist in this image. And on this one, it does. So that's where I'm assuming cultivation's taking place now.
And we have no current maps?
No, no current aerials.
We'll be getting new set of overflights that were taken the last several weeks in about two to three weeks.
And he leases all three of these parcels, or is that considered a leased land?
Yeah, he leases all three parcels.
And do you have a lease in your possession that shows that he leased that parcel, like, right at the deadline of this? Or did he have that lease in 2015? Because if he states and he showed pictures of 2015, his lease would show he had possession of the land then.
The lease that I have before me was signed the 15th day of June, 2016.
So he was growing there in 2015. He didn't have possession of the land?
I would say so.
And those pictures that we got are from 2015?
Actually, no, I was looking at an incorrect document. The lease itself is signed May 1st, 2016.
2016, 16?
Yeah, 2016.
And that's on the parcel that he's seeking to have registered here?
That's the parcel that they submitted this lease for.
But our photograph of all these plants is of September 2015?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm not sure we should base our decision on that because he might have got a previous lease. But I've heard...
Okay, so obviously, there's not going to be anybody here to speak for the appellant. No representative, just making triple sure here. Okay, would the public like to make comment on this particular appeal? Okay. I think I will close it up unless Miguel wants to debate with us.
I'm all right.
Any rebuttal time?
Thank you.
Okay. So I'll bring it back for discussion with the commissioners.
I think this is another one of those cases in which the aerials show that the requirements for cultivation simply weren't met. And that there was a photo submitted that appears to be not of the subject parcel. I don't... I think the appeal should be denied on both grounds.
I agree the appeal should be denied.
I agree.
Okay. Would you like to...
So my recommendations adopt the resolution denying application for commercial cannabis registration 2016-629, thereby upholding the planning director's decision to deny application for commercial cannabis registration 2016-629.
Thank you.
I have a question, well, one statement on the resolution. On page two, paragraph number two, first line, the word "stat" should be "states." And in the evidence for that paragraph, I'm not sure of our constraints here, but I think it might be good to include a reference to the earlier discussion of the evidence on... Under number one. Just to nail down. So I guess if you... If you can, if they add a sentence to the second part of... We include hereby reference the discussion of evidence under number one.
All right.
Well, you could just say, "Since the only photograph depicting cultivation of grading slash earthmoving was found to be false or misleading, comma, as set forth in paragraph one above, comma, the application was left."
That's even better.
Can you get a motion as amended?
So moved.
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very support. Zero. Thank you. And you did put on the record that Commissioner Battelli had due... Okay. Now we will go to...
And just for the record, this action is final unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Okay, so now we'll go back to E2. Sarah Hodson? Thank you. We're ready?
Very good. This is appeal number 2016-8304. Sarah Hodson was appealing a denial of commercial cannabis registration by the planning director. This is actually a continuance on the meeting of June 8th. And at that time, the board, excuse me, the commission had decided it was... It had in mind to grant her appeal and directed staff to return and draft a revised amended finding and also to determine the area of proportional adjustment. Based upon those instructions, new findings were generated. You see those in front of you that were likely penalized a day or two ago. And also, the proportional adjustment was a trial with the consultation of Cal State Engineering, Mr. Paul Peters.
Excuse me, Paul? You need to speak directly into that microphone for it to be picked up. Thank you.
So, like I say, with the help of Mr. Peters over at Cal State, we addressed the proportional adjustment.
Now, is that... We have at least two copies of the resolution, one we got in the mail.
It's the same. It is the same.
Okay, and that proportional, it's part of this... The proportional adjustment is part of it?
The proportional adjustment was the first reason for denial. And there was a question as to whether the grading done in the setback area was of a significant area to warrant the proportional adjustment being the full 22,000 square feet.
And Paul, I didn't mean to disrupt your...
No, no, that's all fine.
My only question is, in the resolution?
Right.
Do we address what the adjustment is?
The adjustment is actually addressed, it's actually part of the forward to the findings themselves. It says be... It therefore resolved that the planning commission grants the appeal to Sarah Hodson for a cultivation area of 22,000 square feet.
But as far as the designation of what... This map, I'm sure is going to be part of your presentation. I'll just be quiet.
Well, the map is basically the presentation, what you have in front of you right there.
I just want to make sure that things are tied to... Because all the property that's been disturbed is a lot more than 22,000 square feet. I just want to make sure that...
Correct.
That what we end up with today is within the 22,000 square feet.
Correct, correct. So if you look at the exhibit in front of you there, you will see... Let's first of all, look at Area A, which is 9,390 square feet. And that is area that was graded between May 1st and May 10th. And it was also designated in her site plan that she presented to us as an area of proportional adjustment. She was looking to do that when she submitted her application. So that area of 9,390 square feet is eligible for the proportional adjustment. And then, next, I just want to look at Area F. Area F is the area that was graded, terraced, and cultivated during 2015. That's the actual area that was operable cultivation area. And it totaled, I got the little inset down below, 13,430 feet. So if you simply add those two together, you come up with 22,820 square feet, which is greater than the 22,000 square feet applied for. So thereby, adding those two together, she meets the requirement for a proportional adjustment for the complete area that she made her application for.
Would you elucidate that? I didn't quite understand what your conclusion is.
Yeah, I have a major question on this. So A was area that was being cultivated between May 1st and May 10th?
It was being graded.
And, okay, but that area was too close to the property line?
Right. It was prepared for cultivation.
So why is that being added into the 22,820 square feet? Are you going to allow her to grade more land? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 no. But the ordinance allows for any area that was prepared prior to May 10th that was within the setback area. They allow a proportional adjustment for that. If we were shown that on the site plan that they submit with their application.
But that's Area A.
That is Area A.
I mean, F?
F is... F is area that they had cultivated. It was already established.
Okay.
But it says F is 6,505 square feet. And then there's a parenthetical, accounts for areas lost to required remedial grading. So you're telling us that F was originally 13,000 something?
Yes, exactly. Remedial grading has to do with the adjustment of grading later. You know, I think I'll have Mr. Peters of Cal State is here, and he can address that.
Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, I'm Robin Peters with Cal State Engineering. And we prepared this exhibit initially. This... The table in the upper-left corner that lists Area F at 6,505 square feet, that would be square footage of cultivation area left over after remedial grading to lay back slopes. We submitted a grading plan, that's the missing piece here, to the Public Works Department to lay back some slopes so they're not so steep. I misunderstood the request for areas when we prepared this exhibit. We accounted for all of the loss of area that might occur when those slopes are laid back. And the 6,505 square feet is a net after the grading that hasn't been done yet. So Paul asked us to go back and revisit Area F and look at it in terms of what was there available for cultivation in 2015. And that's the 13,430 square foot number that we gave him. So that was a misunderstanding on our part as to what the planning department was asking us to show.
But what you're showing us now, this area F on this particular map, is the resulting 6,505 square feet?
No, that's the 13...
That's the 13.
13,430 square feet.
So do we have any exhibit that shows us what the components of the 21,455 square feet that's the current area available for cultivation?
I'm sorry, sir. Could you repeat the question?
We have, at the bottom of the map, is this adding up the current areas available for cultivation. But I don't see if F is at its original... On the map, if F is showing its original 13,000, I don't see on the map a current representation of the various areas making up this 21,455 square feet.
If I could explain?
I hope you.
We submitted the exhibit with the incorrect information for Area F, 6,505 square feet. The 21,000, our calculations... The 21,000, our calculations down in the center, that total 21,455, those include that erroneous area F data. The planning department and I worked together to get the right numbers, that 13,000 square foot number. And then the planning department added in bold type, sort of in the center left of the exhibit, the correct numbers for you to consider today. We, we didn't revise the exhibit, there wasn't enough time prior to the.
Those bold figures, as I understand it, and this will probably go back to Paul, is what she had in 2015. And then, the, the total of 21,455-ish is the numerical indications of the various areas that will be available for cultivation after all the remedial grading. Is that, am I, did I got that right?
Let me see if I can help, Robin, because we're, this is.
Work with me here.
Okay, this is very confusing, because you're giving us a different story than what's in front of us. So we're having a hard time visually taking that map, and the numbers that you are throwing out aren't working for us. So if we're looking at this map, don't look at your numbers just yet. You're telling us area F and C are going to be the cultivation area in going into the future? Is that what you're saying?
Areas, I'm sorry, areas F, C, and additional areas to account for the proportional adjustment area, area A that is lost to setback.
So area B isn't on the map as B, right?
B is in the lower left portion of the map, you see?
Okay, and that is, that is part of what's going to be properly graded?
It was also, also cultivation area within the property boundary setback.
So, so maybe I can help. The area that's shown in sort of the light green color was all of the area that was graded prior to May 10th.
Okay.
The areas C, D, E, and F are the areas they're allowed to cultivate in that meet the 75-foot setback requirement. The areas A and B were in the setback, although B was not shown on the site plan, so we're not considering B. B is off the table at this point in time. So the area A is the area that they are allowed to have for proportional adjustment, all that area within the setback. That is the area that we've added then to F, which is then showed in the gray area, what was graded after May 10th.
That's correct.
So the gray area is part of the cultivation area as well?
The gray area, so the part that will be the approved cultivation area would be C, D, E, F, and the gray area. The gray area is the proportional adjustment.
That is correct.
But that was half bigger than what?
And, and that.
I don't see where F ends up being 6,000 instead of 13.
It's not 6,000, and that's where, okay, so what, what he's saying, if you read this right here, it accounts for areas lost for required remedial work. So when they're.
Well, I was understanding that F was originally 13,430 square feet, but after remedial grading, there's only 6,505 square feet left of F.
That's, that's our estimate, and that's, those are the numbers we submitted, because we thought that's what the planning department was looking for, but it really wasn't. The, what the planning department wanted to know was, prior to May 10th, what was available for cultivation, and that is the 13,000 square feet of F.
Yeah, but, okay, so now to try and understand what, I understand that, that the current area available for cultivation is 21,455 square feet. And my understanding is that area F has been reduced to 6,000, what is it? Where was that? 6,505 square feet?
I, I think, I think we're getting mixed up on the, what, what the, what was graded versus what can be utilized, because when you grade an area and you have cut slopes, you can't necessarily grow on that.
I understand.
And so what we're, what we came up with, what I was trying to find out, and what we're unsure of until we looked at this engineering design that Mr. Peters prepared, was how much area were they allowed to grade after May 10th?
Yeah.
In order to meet the proportional adjustment component? And did it end up being less than the 22,000 square feet that she applied for? Our finding was it was not, and therefore, based on the direction we see last, last meeting, she would be allowed to cultivate up to 22,000 square feet of canopy area within the area that was already graded.
That, that sounds great in principle, I just don't see how it's reflected on the map. And I guess where I get confused is, the, the, the area F that is in, is bounded by the dotted green lines, is that area F that has only 6,505 square feet? Or is that area F that was 13,000 square feet?
It would have been 13,430 square feet.
That's bounded by the dotted green line?
Can I take a?
I'm not sure what the dotted.
Can I take another run at this? I think I can explain this so that it's clear.
Great.
And, and this would be in terms of, if, if, if I could implore you to ignore my current area available for cultivation, those calculations were done based on the erroneous area of F.
Okay, I'll just ignore it. I don't, I don't need a reason why I'm ignoring it, crossing them out.
Okay. So, let's, let's do this. After proportional adjustments, taking into account area that was available for cultivation prior to May 10th, including that area within the setback, take that out of the setback and replace it down, because that's allowed by the ordinance, replace that down in, in what is represented by the gray area. When the dust settles, we have areas C, D, E, F, and the gray area. Those are areas available for cultivation after the proportional adjustment. And I'll ignore B down at the lower left corner, because I guess that doesn't, doesn't apply here.
And, and by F, you're, you mean the 6,505 or the 13?
I'll get, I'll get to that if, if you'll indulge me. So, area C is three, 3,355 square feet. Area D is 560. Area E is 1,350. Area F is 13,430 prior to remedial grading. And the gray area is 9,685. So if you add that up, it's in the 28,380 square feet range. Our calculation is that she'll lose about 5,800, 5,900 square feet to remedial grading. So if you back that out, at the end of the day, after the site is graded according to our grading plan, we'll be right at 22,000 square feet, a little more. That's how those numbers are.
So specifically, the gray areas outside of F, are those graded already?
Yes.
And those were done before May 10th? Or was that the area that was graded when she realized it was too close to the property line?
Those were done after May 10th, the gray area, to account for the proportional adjustment, the portion that was found to be within the setback. There was a surveying issue. When we had the surveying done, the boundary line turned out to be in a position that was unexpected, and it ate up more of the cultivation area than was expected.
So, talking about your proportional, and then I know you're going to go in and try and fix the terraces, and then she's going to lose some space there. But are you going to be doing any further grading to this land whatsoever, whether it's proportional or otherwise?
No.
Okay, so the only work being done on this land is corrective work? There's not going to be any more expansion to the grow areas?
That's correct.
Because I would sure hate to see any more damage done to this property.
We've submitted a grading plan that calls for the remedial grading, fixing the slopes, and then complete erosion. We've submitted an entire erosion control plan for the whole property.
Okay.
That's in public works now and plant check.
Now, what is included in area F? It is this, I was, I was just looking at one.
No, it includes the gray.
And it, and it's, is that including the gray?
No, sir. It's the green.
Stay inside the green, don't use the gray?
All the green, but, but with several different terraces.
Commissioner Ladish asked, what is area F? And that is the green area within the gray. The gray, it does not include the gray.
But you're going to grow in the gray, that's the intent?
That's correct.
So we're adding the gray back into the square footage?
I already did, that's, yes. C, D, E, F, and the gray area is 28,380 square feet. When you back out the grading that we're proposing to fix those steeper slopes, we end up with just over 22,000 square feet.
Could you knock a few things off so it's only 22,000 square feet?
Well, they can only grow 22,000 square feet. The area, the flatter areas that are capable of cultivation.
It's, but it'd kind of, well, that's my concern. I think that there should be only enough area available to grow that's 22,000.
Well, in, in many cases, you have areas that were graded in excess of 22,000, but they're only allowed a canopy of 22,000. So, because in some cases you have, you know, space around.
Well, it was something that's enforceable.
Yeah, and that, and that's why we clearly stated 22,000 square feet. So the concern that we had was that it might be less than 22,000 square feet, and we would have to limit the, the registration to whatever less. After going through the calculations, and hopefully it's understandable now, it's clear that they would, they had that space available. The adjustment still allowed them to have up to 22,000 square feet.
And so what is the, the area of the gray areas, the square footage?
Nine, 9,685 square feet.
685, and so if you add up C, D, E, F, and the gray, that's when you get?
28,830, I'm sorry, 28,380. And then, when you subtract the area that will be lost to grading, that's where we end up, right at 22,000 square feet, just a little above.
Okay, yeah. So the area that's going to be lost to grading is?
It's about, just a little under 6,000 square feet.
About 6,000?
Well, there's a little discrepancy then between the 6,505 figure and the figures you're giving us now. Because if you add up C, D, E, and 6,505 on F, and the gray area, you get your 21,455. So now to get over that number, the 6,505 has, has to be a bigger figure. So I'm trying to figure out which is right for F.
Well, they're, they're all correct. Could you explain that one more time, Commissioner?
Okay, you just came up with 28,380, right? Including all of F. And then you said that if you take out the part that you can't use in F due to remedial grading, you come up with a little over 22,000. But if you take, if my additions are right, C, D, E, 6,505 for F, and 9,685 for, for the proportional adjustment, I think you get just under 22,000.
Well, let's see. What is your number, I'm sorry? I don't need.
Okay, well, just adding them up, C is 3,355. D is 560. E is 1,350. F that's available is 6,505. And the proportional adjustment area is 9,685.
21,455.
Yeah, that's the familiar number, that's what we have.
That's the number at the bottom.
That we're disregarding.
I, I, I think we're getting confused by the 6,505, though. That is something that they need to do in order to repair damage done for, for, it, it doesn't really relate to what they are allowed to have. If they, if they can only cultivate less than that, because that's all that's left of the flat area, then that's, you know, that's just their, their constraint. The allowable under the ordinance, the way I calculated, actually came up to, I mean, they, you look at all the area that was previously graded, and I came up to 28,145. That's adding A, C, D, E, and F with a 13,480. They're getting rid of the 9,390, which was the area that's within the setback, and that was being replaced by area in the gray. Now, unfortunately, the area in the gray was about 3,000 feet over what was that. So they can't use all of that. In addition, they're losing some additional, but that's still well over 22,000 square feet of area that they could somehow configure for cultivation. They, they would, the fact that they're now losing additional land because they've got to lay back those really steep slopes that were there before, is just a constraint they're going to have to deal with. Has nothing to do with the actual permitted area of cultivation. And that's why I believe that, saying that they have a right to cultivate 22,000 square feet as long as they don't grade anything new, other than to repair the damage that was done from the prior grading, that's what they're allowed. Now, if they can only squeeze in 21,000 square feet, that's, you know, just the way it, it has to work for them.
I, I should point out also, when, when we submitted our grading plan and prepared the plan to lay back these slopes, laying back the slopes is one option. She has other options to correct the slope issue, and that would be to use small retaining walls. If it, if it allowed her to lose less area to, you know, in other words, if she were held to something less than 22,000 square feet because of the slope loss, which is, as Director Marr explained, really isn't the case, and that was my mistake, and my misunderstanding about how the ordinance was written. But in that event, she could lose less area to grading by erecting retaining walls and get right back to the 22,000 square feet if she so elected. But I think, as Director Marr pointed out, that isn't necessary in this case because of the strict language of the ordinance.
So is, is it the planning director's understanding then, that when the remedial grading is done, there will be room for 22,000 square feet, and legitimate room, 22,000 square feet of cultivation legitimate under the, the adjustment? And, and perhaps a little bit more that we would assume she's not going to cultivate?
What I'm saying is, based on the previously disturbed area and the adjustment that could be done, she had approximately 28,000 square feet of area that could be used for cultivation, and 22,000 square feet is the maximum. So however she decides to rehabilitate those slopes, if she put in retaining walls, she could, she would have 28,000 square feet. But they're choosing to lay it back, so it's going to be less than that. I don't really care how much less it is, as long as, as it's, you know, she's met the proportional adjustment requirement, and it, it didn't increase the overall area that she had prior to May 10th. So if she chooses, she chooses to only grow 10,000, you know, square feet next year, it doesn't matter. It's less than what she's applied for. She can't go more than that, but she applied for the maximum, which was 22.
And just by putting the 22,000 figure in the resolution, that can, that's a subject for future enforcement if there's. that can, that's a subject for future enforcement if there's a violation of?
If anyone exceeds 22,000 square feet, they're in violation of the code and they need to reduce it.
And if I understand this correctly, which I may not, we should not be including this diagram prepared by Cal State Engineering as part of the resolution. Because things may change. And all we care about is 22,000 square feet maximum on ground that she's permitted to cultivate on. And exactly how she configures that is kind of up to her.
Within the area defined, so, yes, I don't know that it would be necessary to include this in the resolution. This would be something that we have in the record and part of our file. And if we find that additional grading happens or, you know, other areas are being cultivated that weren't approved as part of this action, then she would be in violation.
Does the resolution?
It does not specifically refer to this exhibit.
No, I understand, okay. But it has a limitation of 22,000 square feet.
Yes.
Does it specifically say anything about additional grading? I mean, that?
It doesn't, because the code doesn't allow it.
Okay, okay.
I would suggest to clear the record and make sure that there's no confusion down the line, that after approval of the resolution, we prepare an exhibit that is clear and doesn't have conflicting information in it. We simply didn't have time to do that before this hearing. We had provided numbers over the last couple of days to the Planning Department and there wasn't enough time to prepare a new exhibit. But we could certainly do that to replace this one so that there's no question in the future as to how those calculations were made, if that were held.
I don't see how we could add an exhibit after we?
Well, just before the Planning Department's records.
Just for the, just for the planning.
Yeah, just so we know.
Your reference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be fine.
And that would be helpful.
So areas E, D, and C, were those actually cultivated last year? Or are those just areas that we're adding because we're filling in space? And are those fenced areas? Please.
Hi there, how are you guys today?
Pretty well.
Good, I won't take as long as last time. You asked if C, D, and E were cultivated in the 2016 season. C and D were not. E was not either.
Are those currently fenced?
The fence goes around, E is within the fence, C and D are not. I would do whatever is needed to, if I need to create a second fence or whatever needs to be done, just let me know.
As I recall, you thought that C was within the 75.
I did, yeah.
There's a, we ghosted in a second dashed line. It runs right through Area C. That's our approximation of the original thought about where the setback line was. And it turned out to be in quite a different position. We showed it there for reference.
And assuming we take the action that the resolution suggests, this is still subject to code enforcement? Right, as far as the fencing and the sort of?
Yes, the continued implementation of the ordinance would apply. So whatever standards are in place. So if they choose to cultivate in C this year, they would need to fence it and meet all the other requirements, as well as in D or E.
Let's see, I do have a question for the applicant. Your good faith efforts in 2017 to do things right and to correct previous errors are an integral part of the action that we took the other day.
Yes.
And that includes the SMARTS work for the water, for, I guess it is?
Yes.
I guess, you know, not all that might be required by the ordinance, but it's something that we expect to continue.
Yes.
I just, I guess I just need your reassurance that?
That that's being done.
That that's being done and you will carry through with that. And, you know, it isn't, oh, good, we've got this approval, now we can relax.
Understood, yes, I've signed up, paid for it. And you can check with Robin too, because he's helping me submit these things to the WQCB. There's no going back, not that I would anyway. I'll be completing that for as long as that remediation process takes, until it's complete. I don't mind checking in with documents if you request. The WQCB is who I'll be answering to on a weekly basis with erosion control monitoring. And once I receive the permit for the remediation, the set, the slope remediation that Robin was talking about, that will be happening. And, yeah, so whatever you need to, as proof, just, I don't mind. I'll definitely be moving forward with it, like continuously. And with the SWIP, which is the Stormwater Prevention Plan, the WQCB requires a weekly submittal of, like, an erosion check and make sure all the techniques are installed properly and working properly. And that continues weekly until they decide that the entire area is 100% stable and remediated.
So is your license with them currently active? Or are you waiting for approvals because of all this work?
I have the notice of applicability. And I'll be renewing and changing to a tier three, because I, it's, I've become aware that that's the tier I should be in. So I'm working with them and with an environmental company and with Cal State Engineering to make sure all that's done properly.
All the questions are here.
Are you already beginning your growth procedure?
No, I do not have any plans on the property.
Be pretty hard.
I'm waiting for the final word.
Well, isn't it going to be hard for you to grow once they're going to be doing grading in there and trying to fix things?
Yes, it's going to make it significantly harder. But I'm going to just have to work around it. I'm prepared to do whatever needs to be done to allow that to continue moving forward while continuing to cultivate. The cultivation of the year will make it possible to pay for the remediation. And the remediation will happen alongside the cultivation. We've already went out and installed hay bales all the way down the left side slope. Everywhere that things can be done without that grading permit being finalized by the county, we've done all of that work. And I've also contacted two different erosion control companies. One that does, like, wattles and hay bales and stuff. And the other that does a hydro seeding that basically seeds the hillside, but that can't happen until after the resloping. So all those things are lined up and will happen as soon as able to. The plant, I checked in with Public Works last Tuesday to find out the status of the permit. And they said it's going to, it's in progress, but it's at least four to six weeks away. But I've been checking in on it regularly to remind them.
Any further questions? Paul, do you have any rebuttals?
No ma'am.
Okay.
A question for you, Paul. We received a copy of the resolution this morning. Is it identical to what we received earlier in the week?
Yes, sir.
Can we take public comment?
Good morning, it is still morning. Feels like it's later than that somehow. Colleen Platt with My Valley Springs and the Planning Coalition. This is a really confusing and upsetting appeal. We're very disturbed by the amount of grading that's gone on this site without being permitted and engineered. And here we are, a year later, when it should have already been done, discussing engineering plans and proportional adjustments that were supposed to be part of the original application. And it was clear in the urgency ordinance that was supposed to be a part. And I understand there's mitigating circumstances here that involves statements by code compliance. And I sure hope that that situation gets clarified, that there needs to be a separation between code violations and a separation between that and requirements to meet the urgency ordinance. That, you know, fixing a code violation is fixing a code violation, but then there's requirements to meet the urgency ordinance that are separate from that, that have not been met here. And because of semantics, they're not being enforced here. And so we are very disturbed by this particular situation with the amount of grading that's gone on, unpermitted and unregulated, and the amount of damage and remediation that needs to be done here. Legally, I guess you're at where you're at. But it's very confusing for people and for people to interpret the ordinance and how you're going to rule on the ordinance with all these adjustments going on after the fact. You know, this muddies the waters as to what is the actual basis for a denial? You know, are you going to allow fences to be fixed a year later? Evidently, there's still areas that aren't fenced that will be cultivated in the middle of the winter. They were said fencing wasn't maybe necessary in the middle of the winter. Well, that's not what the urgency ordinance says. So there's a lot of muddying of the water going on. You know, what is the timeframe that you're, I mean, these are still being inspected. Some of these are still being inspected. And this is a year after they're supposed to have met the requirements for registration. So this is also disturbing. So I don't know if you can do anything to clarify? The resolution, to me, didn't clarify what your policy is on, you know, what is the base? When are you going to allow violations to be fixed? And when are violations actually going to be the basis of a denial for registration? So I don't know if you can do that in this resolution or maybe just verbally help me understand that? Because we're having a hard time understanding that. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Vicki Mills, and what I would like is a copy of the map that you guys all have and are looking at? Because it is not part of the agenda online. Okay?
My understanding is that the Planning Commission is not accepting the map into its own record. It was being used as an exhibit temporarily to help Cal State Engineering explain. This being said, it'll be a public record available in the Planning Department and part of the planning file.
Well, so the public is able to get?
They can get it from planning.
Do we have an extra copy?
She can have mine.
Give you a copy.
Peter's taking one too.
It is, but she still wants to see what we're referencing and talking about here.
Yeah, just wait, because when you were talking, I had absolutely no idea.
We had a hard time doing.
Is there any further public comment? Okay. So I know, Colleen, you had a whole lot of questions. This was a hard one. The issues that you're talking about with code compliance, I think are referenced in that resolution and explained why we made the decision we did. Because it wasn't a correction notice that said, you're all done, we're recommending denial. It was one that said, there is further work you need to do and get done. They had put in writing to give her time to get these things done. That was done back in, I think, January before she got before us on those inspections. And this is such a new thing for everybody, right down to code compliance in every department in this county. And I believe that as we have moved forward, code compliance has perfected how they're handling this and that the inspections and the paperwork that they're bringing forward to us with photos are very well documented. And I'm very proud of the progress that they made in how they're handling it now. It just put us in a hard position, because when I seen this originally, you're right, it was one, and Sarah, you know, it's one that we would have denied right out flat because of the way things were worded. I, to be honest with you, it's probably one of the worst graded properties I have ever seen in all of these appeals. It was terrible. So I struggled with the approvals on this. I thought, when it was coming back to us, that that was going to be a smaller grow area. It wasn't going to still be this massive. And then I see all these proportional adjustments, moving and expanding it back up. And that really bothered me, because I'm looking at all these areas and thinking, today, if you were to have the inspection, code compliance would say, no, E, D, and C weren't grown on, they're not fenced, they're not meeting compliance today. But yet, we're adding all of that square footage back in. And I, when Commissioner Wooster spoke a couple of weeks ago, that was one of the things that he referenced was, well, we're going to get, hopefully, this fixed, addressed, comply with all of code compliances and the grading permits. And he looked at you and said, you're probably going to have less square footage to grow in. And you said, I'm fine with that. That's what I thought I was going to see back here today. And then I come back and it's still bigger than 22,000 square feet, but going to be restricted to 22. It was kind of a shock. Anyway, here we are. And I guess public comment's done. And I wanted to see if you have any rebuttal or you have any rebuttal to public comment?
No ma'am.
No ma'am. You want to say anything more? No?
No, I feel like everything's pretty said.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, then we'll close the public portion and bring it back to the commissioners.
Okay, I do have some suggestions on the resolution.
Yeah, I think we all did.
I'll go through them. One is just a typo, it's kind of hard to find. It's on page two of five. It's about two-thirds of the way down. And a very long sentence, it starts, "While it is unequivocally the case that code enforcement officers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." And it goes down and says, "She was operating with a reasonable good faith belief that taking remedial measure, singular, to cure the damage done, et cetera, measure should be measures, plural." And of more substance, and I do have some specific language, but in summary, the resolution does not come right out and say that on the fence issue, that she actually completed the fence. It doesn't come out and say that code compliance has confirmed the fence been completed. It was also brought out in the record that there were no live cannabis plants on the site in 2017, before the fence was put up, and even not until today. And it doesn't point out that really the only reason to build the fence was to comply with the urgency ordinance. There is no other reason to do that. And so the specific language I would propose would be in paragraph two. The second paragraph that starts, "The cultivation area was not fully enclosed." I would add two words, "in 2016." "But the appellant," and then I would add the word "thereafter," "was led to believe, et cetera." The rest of the sentence would remain the same. In the second sentence, I would do the following. "In circumstances where no cannabis plants are present," comma, strike the end, "a county employee has indicated in writing that the requirement did not require immediate compliance," comma. And then I would add these words. "The appellant thereafter did complete the fence in 2017." "And the only reason to build the fence was to comply with the urgency ordinance," comma, and then continue the way it, it was. And I do have this written down if it needs to be repeated or given to the planning director. And then at the end of the evidence section of paragraph two, I would add, as a matter of evidence, code compliance confirmed that the fence has been completed and the appellant stated that no live cannabis plants are on the site.
But the fence, if she moves to grow, the fence is not completed.
She will have to complete a fence if she's going to move her, if she's going to grow in an area that she's not growing now. Before she can put any plants in there, she has to have a fence under the ordinance. You don't have to have a fence until you put the plants in, under the definition of cultivation area. Okay, a couple more on page four. This has to do with the code compliance. Under the first or second full paragraph, just above the evidence, fourth line up, it says that curing the identified violation, singular, would bring her, her commercial cannabis cultivation site into compliance. Should, violation should be plural. And then at the end, I would add one sentence, "She did cure the identified code violations." And that completes my suggestions.
I have a couple of less consequential suggestions. In the title, it should have planning directors with apostrophe S, I think. On page two, the sentence is slightly indented, "While the applicant did in fact grade." After the word "grade," I would add, "without a grading permit." And on page four, the last line before evidence of number three, department's approval of her commercial cannabis registration. But I'd be interested, Commissioner Wooster, in your thoughts as far as the, the square footage requirements and whether we should have further details within the resolution such as you were suggesting two weeks ago.
I think the way the areas work out and the numbers work out, it's not necessary.
Just in further comment, I an approval of this resolution is not an approval of what has happened on this property in the past. I, I agree with the public comments that it was egregious grading before and without a permit. And it's only because of the very special circumstances of this case and the written comments of the county officials that were tied to the urgency ordinance that this resolution can become possible. And I'm reassured that, that the applicant has seen the light and is trying to be now a good steward of the land. And that's why I asked the earlier question. But just the fact that somebody would come in and say, gee, I made mistakes and now I'm going to do better, would not be sufficient grounds to approve an appeal. It's the very special circumstances of this case with the very specific written communications from the county that leads me to support the resolution.
Any further comments? Okay. Would you like to read the recommendation, please?
Yes, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2017-032, granting.
Need you to speak up, she can't hear you.
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2017-032, granting Appeal 2016-804, thereby invalidating the planning director's denial of application number 2016-084, as amended.
Thank you.
As amended.
Yes.
I shall move.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three wins. I just want to say thank you so much and I will, I will check in with progress reports of the remediation and thank you. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Is that off the agenda now? It's off the agenda. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Thank you. Meetings adjourned.